The crew's all here, just as long as we.
Can't turn the fans on?
Absolutely, please do.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. It is March 25th, it is 4:06. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'll do a roll call of Planning Commission members and many commissioners. Uh, Howard Tripps.
Yeah.
Joey Edwards.
Yeah.
Uh, Steve Stevens.
Yeah.
Uh, Dave Clark-Berrell. And Jason.
Here.
Great. Um. And County Commissioner Mutch.
Here.
Commissioner Marcella. And Commissioner Fiedler.
Here.
Uh, any changes or additions to the agenda? We have minutes to approve, uh, for March 11th. We know there were only a couple of you here, but I think you're here, so. Somebody wants to make a motion to approve those?
I wasn't here. That was most to approve the March 11th minutes.
Who else were you?
I think Jason was.
Yes, I was here. I second the motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Updates?
Um, updates. I think I shared out quite a few of them. Um, the last ones that, uh, we had during our work session. We just come, uh, completed the Community Builders Workshop and, um, we are going to look at making an application for, um, technical assistance to go into a scope of work for a community engagement process. Um, and, uh, we did receive the Planning Capacity Grant for, uh, $240,000. And to, uh, broaden the department, uh, as far as bringing in a Housing Director, um, to work on housing initiatives. Um, that the Board has, uh, uh, they're, that they brought forward as goals. And, um, also to bring in more planning, um, uh, expertise to help with affordable housing projects. So that we can fast-track those projects. Um, and we are currently, um, interviewing for a, uh, Planning Director, uh, Deputy Director, um, for the department. And we've got some excellent candidates. And we have, uh, an interview scheduled this Wednesday. So we've got some, I guess my update would be that, uh, we are, um, broadening, uh, our capacity within the department. We're really super excited about that. Um, and then we have probably a dozen or more pending land use applications. I'm not gonna kind of go into all of those right now, but it is going to be a nigh-critical busy season. So I think, um, do you have any cc over the map?
I think so.
Okay. Great. So those would be our updates.
Uh, we're gonna move into new business. Uh, there is a clipboard that I think is hopefully circulating its way around. If you can just make sure to fill, sign in on that. Um, and then how did you guys want to handle the Zoom? Do you want them to just make sure their names are? Oh, and it looks like Dave Clark-Berrell's on.
Yes.
So.
Make sure that their names are displayed. And, um, when we, um, you'll give them direction in your, uh, when we go into hearing.
Right.
So.
Okay, great. Um, first item under new business is file 24-05, which is Land Development Code Amendment. Um, and the approval criteria.
Great. Um, so staff will, uh, we send out kind of a very late staff report on this discussion. But it was based on our work session when we talked about, um, oh, Ruth Borne is, has her hand raised. Oh, she is.
Well, no, I apologize for that. I, I was wondering why I couldn't hear, but I figured out that it hadn't started yet.
Very good. Okay. Great. Um, so, uh, as we talked about in the work session at our, our last regular meeting, um, we looked at some, uh, codes around the region, kind of Eagle County, Summit County specifically. And, um, as, as we started thinking, we'd really like to make sure that our findings include consideration for ancillary plans that we, um, have been working hard on, uh, and will in the future as well. Uh, those long-range planning things like fire mitigation planning and housing needs assessments. And so, um, we are just asking to broaden the first finding generally in most all land use applications, uh, which, uh, calls for consistency with a comp plan, that in addition to that, we would consider those ancillary, um, plans and, um, make sure that they, um, acknowledge the work, um, that, uh, has been, uh, brought forward with those studies. And as, um, that work continues to evolve, we just want to make sure basically, as I think we amended times, that those plans don't gather dust on a shelf somewhere. And also, we want to be a little more explicit, um, when we meet with developers of, of these are the things that are important to the community and things that we want you to consider within your development application. Um, so it, it, it really is a practice that we've, uh, seen in other communities. And we thought that we would introduce into the Land Development Code. So whereas it's pretty broad in the amount of sections that, uh, we highlighted in the staff report, um, it's just that generally, um, all land use applications need to be consistent with the comp plan. And so we want to piggyback on that, that as well as all of those ancillary plans, um, that we have created in the last few years and we will continue to create. And so that is really the basis of the ask by staff. And, and, you know, we discussed that a little bit, um, at our last regular meeting. And so we were bringing it forth today for a hearing.
Great. Any questions from the commission or chemists? Any questions? Okay. Yeah, I, I, uh, remember, I was actually, I feel like we brought this up maybe a year ago at one of these larger hearings that, well, this one document we did though, remember that? And so it's nice to have, I think it memorialized in the code. Um, so what do you need from us today? Is today actually moving us forward, voting on approving the amendment?
Right. So we were asking today to have.
Through this motion.
Open the public hearing process.
Okay.
For discussion. And then we had provided motions, um, but to go ahead and open, um, the hearing, if it pleases the Planning Commission, um, to have the discussion and then decide if you would like to take a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. I will go ahead and read the opening statement for opening public hearing. Uh, the Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. The statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a Land Development Code Amendment under Section 3.8 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the proposed amendment should be approved. In considering that matter, the Commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.8.9 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be, A, the first, or sorry, the county staff will make initial presentation. Second, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. And three, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the Planning Commission or the Board. And once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the Chair. The parties and witnesses are asked to not submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, please simply say so. The Chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the Board and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the Chair will entertain, entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the Commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion will take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or four, deny the application. Uh, the Planning Director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the Commission. The Commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the Commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings?
I'd like to just say that I'm not prepared to have this conversation or go through the hearing. Um, I didn't have any discussions with staff when I wasn't able to be part of the work session with the Planning Commission.
Okay. Um. At this point, would it? So you, so you would request that we don't even move forward with the public hearing portion of this?
If we could reschedule it.
Um, certainly that, you know, you could go into discussion on it today if you would like. Or you can table the, the public hearing and discussion, um, for, um, a later date if you would like. And, um, you know, staff is aware that, um, Commissioner Mutch, uh, does have some, um, questions. We could either try to approach it today or if, as she's indicated, that she will not be ready for that. And so maybe a tabling would be, um, the best opportunity for her to meet with staff. And, um, work through whatever the, those remaining questions may be.
Okay.
Amendment table.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to table. Do we have a date that you want to push that to?
Um, let's say we would do a date certain so we don't have to re-notice the file.
Right.
Um, so, um, I would ask if Commissioner Mutch has a date in mind.
We're going to do a. First, going to second and fourth, one day?
Yes, second and fourth are regular meetings.
What's on our upcoming next agenda?
I believe the eighth is just a work session.
Yeah, the eighth is a work session. We have an application for the 22nd. So we could do, um, the eighth if, if that's not too soon.
So when we talk into either of those dates?
If the eighth isn't too soon, I think that would be better. We do have a substantial, um, PUD without subdivision scheduled for the 22nd. So, um, if the eighth is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I was hoping to just get somebody to make a motion to table two to eight.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Uh, we'll move down to the second item on our agenda. Let me close that out. File 24-04, which is the Angel View 2 Major Subdivision Sketch Plan. Um, I. Just want to do a quick. Intro, uh, if I still have anything to do. Um, into the subdivision process quickly for public and understanding kind of our process here today. Um, major subdivisions, um, I'm gonna read this out of our Land Development Code. Major subdivisions are approved in three steps: a sketch plan approval, preliminary plat approval, and final plat approval. The first, a sketch plan application is a conceptual proposal that provides an overview of the proposed subdivision and allows generalized discussion of the apparent merits and perceived problems of a particular subdivision configuration. Second, a preliminary plat application allows a detailed review of the proposed subdivision in the context of the technical requirements, design standards, standards, and improvement requirements of this code and the roadway design standards and construction specifications for Lake County, Colorado, and any other applicable regulations of Lake County or the state of Colorado. Then the final process of final plat application must demonstrate that the final technical and legal documents are consistent with the previous, previous approvals granted for the proposed. So tonight, we're talking about a sketch plan. A sketch plan is a generalized land use plan and development envelope for the area proposed to be included within the subdivision. It is required as a means of allowing early review of a proposed subdivision before substantial planning work has been undertaken and before substantial expenses have been incurred. A sketch plan must cover all of the land area to be included in the subdivision and identify the type and total amount of development to occur. Lot size and density, as well as the proposed plan for pedestrian or in vehicular circulation within, in leading to the subdivision. If the subdivision is to be developed in phases, a phasing plan must also be established as part of the sketch plan. Part of the sketch plan process is a pre-application meeting with, um, staff. Next is filing the application. Then there's some middle requirements in which they have to, um, meet in order for this to then come to public hearing. Um, things they have to outline within that, um, are your ownership, tract boundaries, street pedestrian circulation, existing development on the subject, soil types, proposed method of water supply and sewage disposal, a written narrative that includes, includes the nature and intent of the project, along with details not otherwise described above. And that's general description, proposed method of fire protection, proposed phasing plan, general description of compliance within the development standards, and a detailed description and demonstration of compliance with all the sections of sketch plan review criteria. That then goes to us here at joint public hearing. Um, we open a public hearing with both Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. Um, we will entertain, um, uh, public comment during this phase. And then, uh, we make a recommendation of approval to, or denial to the County Commissioners and they will make their determination at their next board meeting. I just thought that was important because I think major subdivisions can get a little confusing and people think a lot of specifics have to be figured out within the sketch plan. And that's not exactly the way it goes. So. I'll go ahead and read the opening state, statement for subdivision sketch plan. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on the major subdivision, sketch plan application, under Section 3.16 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the conditional use permit application should be approved. In considering that matter, the Commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.16.3H of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be, number one, members of the Commission and/or Board will disclose if they have any ex parte communications. Two, county staff will make an initial presentation. Three, the applicant may then make their presentation. Or, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Such presentations will be limited to three minutes. We will also not allow you to allocate your three minutes to another party. Um, five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the Commission and the Board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the Chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, please simply say so. The Chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the Board and there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the Commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to clo- close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, approve the applications with newly identified conditions. Or, four, deny the application. The Planning Director shall make a record in a substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the Commission. The Commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the Commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Okay. And you guys can, even with that screen view, we can monitor if people are raising hands and stuff. That's the only concern I have with this screen view. Um.
Yeah, uh, well, as soon as we finish our presentation, we'll go back to the.
Hearing none, I will now ask that each Planning Commission member, and then I'll ask each County Commissioner, if you have any ex parte communications that you need to disclose, and if so, to please disclose them now. Um, I'm gonna go back and just read roll call. Uh, Howard Tripps.
None.
Joey Edwards.
None.
Stevens.
None.
Dave Clark-Berrell.
None.
Kate, Jason Murco.
None.
And Heather Lynn, none. Uh, Commissioner Mutch?
None.
Commissioner Fiedler.
None.
Okay. Great. We'll hand it over to staff to make initial presentation.
Awesome. I'm gonna, um, Heather already, um, spoke a little bit about this, uh, first slide. And that was just kind of defining what the process is. And so this is a generalized discussion. This is our concept stage of a major subdivision where we look at the merits and we talk about perceived problems. And, um, the next stages of development that we'll go into for the applicant would be the preliminary plan. That's really where the rubber hits the road. That's the very detailed aspect of, um, the next stage of development. And then the final plat is, um, the legal documents and the planning, or plating, excuse me. And, um, making sure that all of the conditions, um, that were assigned to the file have been, um, adequately addressed. Um, this is just to give us some situational awareness of where we're generally talking about. And so, um, tonight, we're looking at the AV2 parcel that we're referring to. That we're gonna break that down into, uh, parceling B. Um, but here is Angel View 1. There is a small, um, privately owned parcel in between these two parcels. Um, and this is just located northeast of the village of Twin Lakes in Warren Acres. We have San Isabel National Forest. Um, we have campgrounds, um, located, of course, then approximated to Highway 82. You may be able to see, there's kind of this pink trail system up here where you can just see, um, where the Colorado Trail comes into, um, the Angel View 2 parcel, um, which in this configuration shows it at 79 acres, a little over 79 acres. And then that, um, ends up being, um, Angel View subdivision. They have applied for final plat. They have an approved preliminary, uh, but they have not finalized yet their final, uh, plat for Angel View 1 or Angel View subdivision. They have a shared access that we're gonna look at in a little more detail coming up with Angel View 2. Then the 79.7 acre parcel that we looked at in the previous slide has been broken up. It's consistent with Senate Bill 35, um, where they were able to divide the property in, uh, to two parcels, each being 35 acres or greater, not requiring subdivision. And so tonight's discussion really dives into parcel A, that 44.7 acre parcel, where the applicant is looking to do a major subdivision with 11 residential lots. Um, both, um, Angel View and Angel View 2 are intended to be private gated subdivisions with a second, third, or, uh, additional subsequent, uh, homeowner market. Um, and parcel B is a 35 acre tract that they are considering a future PUD of mixed use. They've spoken about lodge, wellness center, glamping, some employee housing, uh, to be supportive of those commercial uses. So that's what kind of the breakdown of kind of the integral parts of this. So this is Angel View 1, uh, or Angel View. Um, 17 lots. Again, uh, they have applied for final plat, but it is not currently plotted. There are two access points, one down here, um, that, uh, give access to lots 15, 16, and 17. And then this access point, um, located in this, uh, location. And then this is where Angel View Way is going to connect with Angel View 2. Which, here is that connection point coming then on to, uh, Colorado Highway 82. And then the further breakdown of this parcel A, the 44.7 acres, follows this darker boundary line here. So you'll be able to see that this is the 35 acre future PUD. And this is the major subdivision that we are considering this evening. There is an easement that connects these two, um, that you will see going through here. And then this highlighted area is the 4.47, I think, acre parcel. Um, that is the open space parcel with the Colorado Trail, um, included in it. So, let's go to the next slide. So tonight, we're just gonna kind of go through all of those elements that, uh, Heather just went through the code and described for the code. Um, what are the areas of, of development review that we're looking at this evening? And so first, we're starting with the zoning compliance. This parcel is, uh, zoned recreational. They are proposing 3.3 lots, which are consistent with the minimum lot size. Um, there are areas of influence. We're gonna talk a little bit about that. We're gonna ask the applicant to, to define that a little better for us. And, but we would say that generally, this is what we consider our building envelopes. Um, we do see evidence, um, that we need to make sure that the proposal does meet, uh, the required setbacks, which is 23, 20 feet from the street in rear and 10, 10 feet from the side. Um, and all that is being, uh, proposed is residential use within Angel View 2. The utilities, uh, so first we'll start, they are proposing a, uh, individual wells. Uh, this is pending a water decision. So at, um, sketch plan, um, the applicant is required to tell us the basis of what, um, their water plan will be. And so they are looking to acquire additional water shares and go through the augmentation, um, process in water ports. And they, or they, they have talked about in their application, the possibility of coming in under the Lake County Augmentation Plan, um, as. under the Lake County augmentation plan as a possibility. At this stage in the development, the things that they do have to bring forward with are some dependability of the water source, what the anticipated yield, depth, water quality, estimated cost of construction, and the anticipated rate of water delivery will be within the subdivision. We are required, under statute, to refer subdivision to the Division of Water Resources at preliminary. However, I think it's, we did refer this to the Division of Water Resources in 2022. Angel View 2, as some of you on Planning Commission and some of you with the Board of County Commissioners, will remember that Angel View 2 did submit a major subdivision in 2022. However, they chose to withdraw it just based on some of the information that they obtained through that process, and decided that they wanted to work a little more on their application before they brought it forward again. So at that time, we did refer this to the Division of Water Resources, and the result of that from the division was that there was just not enough information at this point for them to provide, that inadequate supply has been determined, and again, reasonably so, because they do not have a decreed on plan as of yet. But we did refer it just to create that situational awareness. Spoke today with Melissa Vanderpoel, who is the engineer and team lead for our division, and she just indicated, again, there's not been any changes between that 2022 application and what we have before us today, and what has been submitted by their water engineer, Craig List. So the comments remain the same. We're still waiting for determination, and we will do that per, we will refer that per statute at preliminary. Individual onsite wastewater treatment systems, or OWTS systems, are what they are proposing to the subdivision will use for sanitary waste needs. And we do need them to talk a little more in at preliminary about the ability for each property to support a site. And we also require them to include an alternate site. Code requires when OWTS are being utilized, that sites must be a minimum of two and a half acres. Obviously, at three acres, they are consistent not only with zoning, but with onsite wastewater treatment system requirements. We do have a will serve, a letter from Sangre de Cristo, again, from 2022. And we have had a discussion, all of the will serve information provided at that time is relevant today. There is some discussion that easement consideration will need to occur at preliminary. And then Colorado Central Telecom has given what we would call kind of a conditional will serve for a fixed wireless internet connection for this subdivision. And again, we'll have more information for you at preliminary on that aspect. Roadway and access, this is really an important piece of discussion at this point. So their C dot access permit for Angel View 1, for those two access areas that we showed you earlier, that has expired. And because Angel View 2 is going to increase the use beyond 20%, they are required to do a new traffic study and calculations for Angel View 2. In addition, some considerations should be had within this planning of these kind of integral parts of what kind of impact is going to happen with when parcel B is developed. It may be that C dot will continue to, or will allow for these three separate access areas. We don't know yet, maybe they won't, at which time there may have to be a bit of a realignment. You know, generally, we talked a little bit about it in the staff report. This is kind of the maybe awkwardness of bringing these in in different plans. And so today, you will see that we're going to suggest a condition around coordination on these access points with C dot. And the roadway designs, there's conversations with the staff report and in the engineers' report, just about making sure that we are providing guidance, that we need designs that are consistent with providing adequate emergency access, and then also maintenance consideration. Things like, we brought up like trash removal and snow management and the like. And so we just want to make sure that those things, we're providing them early guidance again in this discussion period through our engineers, to provide them some guidance. We do have areas within the proposed subdivision that have shared access driveways, which are dividing the parcels. So we, or the lots, the proposed lots. And so we provide some guidance and direction and comments from engineering within the staff report, and so we are asking the applicant to either think about some potential redesign or coming forth with an ask for a variance. Variances for roadway standards can be determined by the Public Works Director in conjunction with their engineering consultants, because again, they are not zoning areas that would require the Board of Adjustment. We also want to make sure that they have adequately addressed all of the roadway and access issues that have been brought up through the detailed county engineering comments that you've been provided. The open space track, Track A, and I'm sorry, I made some edits, but they don't seem to be in there. The 4.48 acre parcel, they are proposing to be dedicated to Lake County. The easement itself for the Colorado Trail may be given to either, again, the Colorado Divide Coalition or the Colorado Trail Foundation. But in speaking with Adam Bay, our Pro's Park Rec and Open Space Director, we just want to have more conversations with the applicant in regards to maintenance and liability in receipt of that dedication of that open space parcel. So we'll continue to work with the applicant on that aspect. We are asking them to provide a definition in regards to the area of influence, and what is included, what is allowed outside the area of influence, and what's allowed within the area of influence. I think that we generally know on the inside, that's vertical construction. But on the area outside, the table that they provided gave a very generous, like 62% of open space consideration. And so we would like the applicant to explain to us, are those private open space areas? Are they open to the residents of the subdivision? Will there be trail systems through those areas? Or are they just generally more like building envelopes, and those areas outside of them are still maintained as private property and not available for the residents of the subdivision? If that's the case, and they are more of like a building envelope, then we're suggesting consideration of 62% of that being open space is overly generous. We certainly suggest that there's merit and appreciative of having more reason, or well-thought-out building envelopes that really look to preserve a large amount of open space. But we would say, if those are not actually available for access for the residents, then I think moreover, we would be more inclined to say that they have achieved the 25% of open space that we would like to see in a subdivision, with 10% being in the 4.47 acre parcel, Track A, or excuse me, Track A. And that consideration of the fact that they've been very mindful in creating these areas of influence would then, staff would suggest, leave the intent of the code of 25%, 62, in addition to the 10% at 72 seems, unless we find out that the intention is to create those into open space areas for all the residents. Next slide here. Fire, law enforcement, and emergency management. Representatives and directors, the sheriff, the fire marshal, the fire chief, and emergency management all met with this applicant as part of the community development team before they applied. So we have applicants meet very early in their concept, before they even meet with staff or pre-app meeting. And we provide them direction from all of those different agencies. So fire, law enforcement, and emergency management all participated in that with the applicant. And through that, some of the bullet points here, they provided them guidance on. One notable element is that the applicant has worked with the Colorado State Forest Service, JT Schaefer, in producing a wildfire mitigation plan for Angel View 1, and they intend to do that in Angel View 2, that has significant benefit in an area that is designated or is identified as having a severe fire risk. So that is certainly one of those merit points of the application. The applicant, the development, is requiring all the homes to be sprinkled, and then to have, in addition, fire mitigation through having cisterns. Angel View 2, we don't see on the plan where these cisterns are located, and so we want to have a greater understanding of whether or not there is additional cistern to be located in Angel View 2, as well as the location within Angel View 1. Knox box access, Knox box being a manufactured type of access, but again, we want to make sure that all of these access points, because these are private roads, with private access, that we can get our emergency responders in there. So we just want to make sure, again, that those are present as they were conditioned in AV1. Trail and campground impact and educating new residents on rural remote homeownership. This all leads into that discussion that I led in with, that the community development team, fire, law enforcement, emergency management really provided guidance to the applicant, and the need to really educate the residents in this area of what to expect when you live in a rural remote area, and what kind of amenities may not be readily available, as well as expectations for emergency services. And also then considering ways to just deter any kind of criminal activity that might, there might be some exposure from the different adjacent uses. They have met with the school to talk about how to address their school dedication, and in their choosing fee in lieu versus a school land dedication. And that is the amount that they have determined with the help of Paul Anderson at the school district, that they will need to contribute at final plats. Environmental, some of these things are, they have done some initial testing and investigation, and again, at preliminary, these are things that they will dive into at greater degree. So their consultant, TST, has looked at drainage erosion, flood and sanitation control. They will dive deeper into geotechnical investigation, consider topography, take into account all of the engineering review, and take into consideration, we already have comments back from Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and of course, we want to make sure that all their plans are dark sky compliant. Housing, housing is something that has changed from 2022 to the current application. The applicant has responded to some comments that were, and thoughts that were brought forward within that discussion two years ago. And so they are offering a voluntary developer established transfer fee. This is a fee that would live in perpetuity, and they are extending it to Angel View 1, as well as in Angel View 2. So I think there was a little confusion, because in portions of the application, it talks about a half percent consideration that would be a fee collected at any D transfers. But they identified, you know, one of the things the housing director also mentioned was that, you know, it's going to take a period of time before this would start being a meaningful contribution. So they have reduced the transfer amount to .4, and are offering now seed money, basically, in the amount of $300,000 at final plat of AV2 to start that fund. And then subsequent transfers would be the transfer fee of 4%. So as the applicant has explained it to staff, that is why you'll see 5% in some of the considerations and discussion, and actually, they wanted to activate some early contribution to the Lake County Housing Authority for supporting affordable workforce housing. I'm not going to, don't worry, I'm not going to go into every single one of these redlines, but these are just the engineered comments, they were all detailed and included within your packets for items that came up from the engineers. And so these are just the level of detail that we are asking them to respond to at Approval criteria, so tonight, and to piggyback on what the guidance that Heather provided at the beginning of the hearing, we are looking at land use and zoning this evening. And we are looking at the approval criteria that is specified in the code, one being consistent with the comp plan, two is being consistent with the Land Development Code in all of the different chapters relating to major subdivision. We are looking at the spatial pattern, and that it's efficient. We're looking at the suitability for development, and that is specific with the code, what we read by that. And then the compatibility with the surrounding uses. The applicant, in your staff report, we have provided their suggestion of how they meet these very important approval criteria, and they really are the basis and findings that need to be made this evening in order to approve this application. So staff has provided some conditions by which if a condition of approval was the next, or if approval was desired as a recommendation, these were the conditions by which staff would suggest the Planning Commission should consider. And one is that all of the engineering comments and redlines will be adequately addressed at preliminary, along with, of course, all of the risks and the requirements of a preliminary. So everything that we did in the fight at sketch early on, along with everything that is required, and again, keep in mind, that's our detailed review. The C dot issue has to be resolved. The definition of the area of influence, and how does it relate to open space. Topographic map needs to be included in the preliminaries, the middle, and that the applicant needs to either seek a variance in consideration of the easements and shared driveways, or that they need to consider redesigning. And then everything that has been stated by the applicant, either within their submittal or that is said tonight shall be binding conditions of approval. And there's one other thing that I haven't mentioned, but it's very, very important. And that is, it's certainly specified in the staff report, and that is that Angel View 1, or excuse me, Angel View 2 cannot proceed with construction or final approval until we have Angel View 1 fully plotted and the access has been determined. So that is, I know, is spoken about within the staff report, but I just want to make sure that we've made that incredibly clear, both to the applicant and to Planning Commission at Board. So that is everything, the very long-winded staff presentation. Happy to answer any questions to the Planning Commission or Board.
Okay, thank you.
And we can take this down, so you can now see everyone that's here.
Anything anybody needs to address before I just jump into the public panel? Okay.
I was just gonna ask if there's a timeline on Angel View 1 being finalized?
I would, I think that's a great question, when we get to the applicant.
Okay.
So we will put that and hand it over to the applicant for their presentation.
And I could, Melissa, would you like to sit here?
You want me to sit there?
Sure, I'll hop over here, and that way you can have... That way you can set your things down.
I don't think Jason will mind.
All right. So this is the driver, huh? There we go. All right, well, thank you, Ann. That was very detailed. So I'm Melissa Kendrick, and I'm part of the Angel View Development Team. So I'm going to go through what our agenda is. And we, what we'll do is we'll speed some of these things along because you've heard it once from Ann. But not knowing exactly what she's going to say, we wanted to make sure we had it covered. So we're going to introduce our team. Talk, we got to see where the project is located. We'll talk a little bit about what we think is important from our perspective. And then, and then address the new concept plan. Because as Ann said, at the end of 2022, when we went to the public hearing and then we withdrew the application, we really took that information that we learned and have done some really major redesign. And so we think that's a really big benefit overall because we learned a lot. So we want to show you what that is, even though all of that is not what's being approved tonight or being recommended for approval. So we'll talk about our project benefits and then go into detail about those 11 lots. That includes the Colorado Trail. I think Ann's covered that pretty well, the conditions of approval and the approval criteria. So Ellen, I'm gonna, let's see, I thought I made it, there we go. Introduce the team, please.
I don't think I have to go name by name, but very proud of the team that we've assembled and kind of handpicked who I think are the best in Colorado to help us with this. We've also paid attention. We spent the last year and a half really trying to figure out what the best use is for Angel View 2. In that process, it made the most sense to divide it in half and then give us time to really figure out the eastern side. I'm going to let my team do most of the talking because quite frankly, they, I'm very proud of them and they deserve that opportunity. So I'll pass the baton on that.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen. I'm going to be good at this. Yeah, so this looks quite familiar. So I think it's been pretty adequately covered. So I'm going to go into our project overview. And what was said is that it's important that you understand that the Angel View subdivision that has been approved through the sketch plan and preliminary, but not final plotted, is in many ways very similar to the Angel View 2 sketch plan that's before you tonight. And that, in that the zoning is the same. It's recreational zoning. We're doing the three acre lots that have been described, which comply with the zoning. The road network ties it together quite well. There will be trail connections and other important amenities that will be shared between Angel View and Angel View 2. And so that includes a clubhouse. It will include access to the Colorado Trail and other things. So that's important to understand. We are working, the question was, where are we at the final plat? And I feel like we've been inches away for a while. But I think we really are. I think, you know, maybe even in April, we should be able to finalize those documents. But we have been through the review of them. And so we have our final list. We have to be scheduled for a public meeting with the board and then those things get finalized after we meet with Ann and our staff. So we're hoping in the next couple of months to have that finished. So it should be well ahead of a final plat for this project. So I think Ann spoke quite well to the comprehensive plan. We'll talk about that a little more at the end. But again, we're a low-density, low-impact development. And we think the Colorado Trail is just really a shiny feature of this project. And we are working with, who is, who is that going to be? That, the land, who's the land going to be donated to, dedicated to? And right now, we're working with the Colorado Trail Foundation, who is here tonight and will speak to that. But they're definitely in a position to receive that land. And so that would take care of both the land and the trail easement that would be needed. You did a great job at describing the transfer fee. So again, this is an offering. It's, the county can't actually require it of us. But we feel like in this situation, it's a really appropriate tool to use in raising money for this important affordable housing issue. So that's what we're doing there. And then we do believe we comply with the development, all the development code requirements and road standards with a minimal variance, if there is such a thing, we think there is. So with that being said, we're going to, I'm going to turn it over to Brian to talk about the concept plan. Do you want to come sit here? Or you want to sit there?
I can just sit here.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
We're going to, we're going to change presenters a couple of times. So we don't have to reorganize the room each time. My name is Brian Williamson. I am a landscape architect and planner with TST Consulting Engineers. We're based out of Fort Collins, but we're very excited to be here tonight to talk about the project. This is the concept plan. The concept plan does include both areas that are included in the sketch plan that is on the table tonight and things that are in the future. We did want to just address a couple of those things or could really cover the vision for the project. Ellen and Ann both mentioned the subdivision. So we'll get into the nuts and bolts of that a little bit more. But really, this revised plan is a response to our previous hearing that Melissa mentioned. And we've included a couple of additional amenities on the east side of the site. And really, we've broken this up into a 35 acre parcel for future development and a 44 acre parcel for current development. Really, those, we're addressing, clearly what we heard was we need product type diversity. So we're addressing that here. We're trying to promote tourism in Lake County in plans with a comprehensive plan and then address some of the need for workforce housing. If you go to the next slide. So this is a more detailed view of the future development area. So one, we're providing an area for workforce housing. That area is depicted in the orange at the very southeast corner. There are not really any firm plans for that. We don't have a dedicated amount of acreage or number of units or product type. I think there, as we evolve the plan for the second piece of this project, there's a lot of details to be worked out. There's opportunities for, for sale product. There's opportunities for leased product. There are opportunities for standalone product or attached product, depending on kind of how that need develops. And so we're very excited to work with the county and the workforce task force to really kind of define what that needs to be. But there is a place on the project site carved out for that use. The second one is the resort lodge and wellness center. So that's kind of centered in the middle there. Again, that's a very different use than what we were working with before. And there's a lot of details to be resolved there. We don't know kind of the size, the number of rooms, and the impact there. But we need to find the right partner to make that a viable and a shining gem for the county. The third use that we've introduced is glamping. That's another hospitality use that we're trying to introduce and create the transition between Angel View 2, this future development, and then into the campground. So kind of as we go from west to east, going to a lighter and lighter impact as we interface with Lakeview Campground there. And then there is the potential for some future single-family lots, kind of depending on how the configuration of all of these things come together. As Ann mentioned, this type of use is not compliant with the current RECs zoning. So there's a PUD process that we would entertain. Part of the initial part of the, of the beginning steps of that PUD is kind of defining all of those standards about the density, you know, the number of units of all of these things. So we really need to make sure that we take the time to get those, those details right before we can start that PUD process. Can you go to the next slide? So this is the exemption plat. It's depicted in kind of blue for the parcel that is under current development and red for the parcel that is future development. And then we wanted to show that on the next slide as an overview on the concept phasing plan. So you can see kind of exactly how those two fit into the blue, which is our current application, and the red, which would be the future application. One thing about how we've laid this division out is you can see that Angel, the extension of Angel View Way and then the future street that serves the 11 lots, those are all in the first development parcel. And then we've gone with the access easement, probably emergency access, public access easement, through the future parcel, which will be dedicated by separate document. That gets kind of like all of the access requirements met for that, for the blue parcel. It does look like a very circuitous route. You might say, why are we kind of bending and going all over here? When we get to the preliminary plat, you'll see that that is designed specifically to match the topography and have the minimal amount of impact while still meeting the road standards. We're really trying to put the road alignment to work with the land as opposed to having, you know, significant cuts and fills and disturbance along the path of that road. There is about 400 feet of vertical elevation change from the northwest corner to the southeast. So there's a series of tiers as you work through this project. So those, those roads kind of run along those tiers and try to minimize the impact of those improvements. I'm open to the, I just want to open up to our team and see if there was anybody else who had points that I missed on the concept plan or the phasing plan. Anybody, we have a few members on Zoom. If anybody has questions out there.
No, we'll save public comment for public comment.
We have a couple of team members.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, sorry. If so, then I'll turn it over to Andy Cahill, who's going to do the next part of the presentation. He's on Zoom.
Thank you, Brian. If you don't mind, I might ask you to flip slides for me.
Sure.
Perfect. So our commitment in these projects really encompasses both the financial to the community and the less tangible. So we're very much committed to keeping jobs local, to hiring people from local community, to helping with the affordable housing issues, to keep residents local. We're committed to preserving the environment and the Colorado Trail experience, as we've already talked about, with the possible dedication of the land to the Trail Foundation and to helping solve community issues where possible. So what we aren't is a giant developer that's just in this for the money. I think every person involved in this project is involved in it because they love the land and they love the area. This is one of a very limited number of projects that we're working on all within that area to develop. So with that said, we have made some estimates. And I'll say, these are obviously estimates. We're happy to provide the numbers behind all these numbers and have to a number of people within the room. But we're very focused on how we're contributing both directly and indirectly financially to the county and to the surrounding area. When we think about direct project benefits, I'm not going to spend a ton of time going through every number, but over the next 20 years, we're estimating $35 million coming into Lake County coffers. The vast majority of that is through direct property taxes as these properties get developed. Contributing $25 million over that period. We know that this is always an issue for all counties out there, particularly with the mine eventually shutting down. There's a lot of revenue that needs to be replaced from the tax base. And we believe that these would contribute significantly to that. In addition, we've looked at the lodging tax, the voluntary transfer fees that we discussed earlier, the building permits from building large houses on the majority of these lots, as well as a voluntary lodging fee that I don't think we've discussed tonight. But this would be a 1% amount added to lodging fees that in theory, people could remove, but rarely do, where we've seen a lot of success in Crested Butte and some of the surrounding areas with a similar fee. Brian, if you can move us to the next slide. And then we talk about indirect project financial benefits. This is local spend by people who will own these houses. We believe over a 20-year period, we're talking about almost $100 million in additional spend as well as the affordable housing. And while we're still ironing out exactly how many units there will be, we do expect to have a fairly substantial affordable housing system in place for employees and potentially for community members. We also think that the local spend just from the Angel View housing build, it is going to approach $30 million in local labor and supplies. And then when we think about ongoing purchases of both services and supplies and philanthropy by people who may live in this community, we believe that number approaches $60 million over a 20-year period. And again, we're happy to share these numbers. And you may disagree with some of our assumptions. Even if that's the case, we're still talking about tens of millions of dollars coming into the local community. We think our assumptions are very realistic, though. So with that, Brian, I'm not sure whose section is next, actually.
Back to me.
Hey, that's what I thought. So back to Brian. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. So now I want to talk a little bit about what the current application actually is. We're kind of going from the larger global viewpoint to now what we're specifically asking for a recommendation of approval tonight at one. So this is the sketch plan rendered in the same fashion as the concept plan. You can see that there are the 11 single-family lots. And what's shown is in the lighter tan color is the lot size. And then the yellow color is the area of influence. And we'll talk about the area of influence a little bit more in just a minute. But again, you know, private roads that are designed to Lake County standards. The county would not be expected to maintain those. The HOA will maintain those roads. And, you know, and then we have the track of about four and a half acres, Track A, that with the Colorado Trail runs through. We could go to the next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about the area of influence. So we've heard tonight the comparison between the area of influence and the building envelope. The area of influence is actually more restrictive than the building envelope. So not only does the building need to fit into those areas, but any other improvements on the lot need to make them. The only exceptions are the driveway to access the area of influence, the on-site wastewater septic treatment systems, and then any utility connection. So those are the only things that can happen outside of those areas of influence. The intent in the area of influence is 20% of the lot size. So if you have a three acre lot, which is the minimum, that area of influence is about 8,700 square feet. So we're leaving the other 80% of that lot undisturbed, aside from those, those exceptions. So in overview of the project, 10% of the, of the project area is that Track A, the 4.49 acres. And that can, has the existing alignment of the Colorado Trail in there. There's been some talk both tonight about it being dedicated to the county with an easement to the Colorado Trail Foundation or potentially being directly donated to the Colorado Trail Foundation. I think we can work out those details as we move through preliminary and final. But the intent is that that parcel would be available. The Colorado Trail will not need to be realigned. We'll welcome those visitors onto the property. So if you take that, the open space that's preserved on the private lots is 62% of the, of the project area. So that's 27.66 acres. So if you combine that with the 10%, we're at about 77% or 72% of that project that's going to be undisturbed. So really, more so than of, you know, allowing a lot of active recreation or things like, like that, what we're trying to do is have a lighter footprint on the land. Really not disturb, only disturbing the minimal amount of area that we can. Those, the remaining area, the 80% on those lots, is private open space. So it would not be open to your neighbors or other members of the public. Private open space for those lot owners, but again, preserved in the existing condition. Of that area, 11% of the area, or 5.17 acres, is the roads. So if you, if you kind of take all of those things in, about 17% of the project is where we're going to be building houses. So it's really, we're trying to make that light footprint on the land. Really preserving, you know, that 72% in the kind of natural state. I did want to talk a little bit about the Colorado Trail and the buffering and the distance there. Again, that's that 4.49 acre tract. So the closest lot line to the existing alignment of the Colorado Trail is 108 feet. We're 237 feet to the closest area of influence. That would be to Lot 10. And then the next closest one is Lot 11, which is 257 feet. So there is also a significant vertical separation between the trail. I talked about the, you know, the benches as you go across this project from the northwest to the southeast. Really, that trail is on the highest bench. And then we've located those AOIs on the next lower level down so that really the views from the Colorado Trail are really going to be more that vista view out to Twin Lakes and in that natural environment rather than looking directly into a housing development. I think with that, I am going. I think with that, I am going to turn it over to, back to Melissa.
Yes.
And we can kind of...
Thank you. Yeah, Anne went through these in quite a bit of detail. I think the important thing is that we're in agreement with the seven conditions of approval. You know, we don't see any problems with the red lines that we received. We will work our way through that. We will find a solution to the C dot issue of access to the property. We've talked about the areas of influence. We will make sure the definition is clearly within the preliminary plan application and work with whatever adjustments to the open space calculations we need to do. We'll make sure in Condition Four that the setbacks are met. We'll provide a topographic map with that application, and we will figure out, you know, either seek a variance or consider modifying the road design a little bit, or actually their driveway design, to meet the code requirements. So, and Seven is really an all-inclusive, anything else that's going on. So with that, we do believe, and we appreciate staff support on this, that we meet the approval criteria for a major subdivision. You know, this area is part of the rural, remote area of your comprehensive plan, and so this is a low-impact, a low-density development that we believe is consistent with the plan. We're also adding this component for the affordable housing by the private transfer fee, which again, meets and addresses some of the affordable housing issues. I'm going to jump a little bit, I think, just because you've been sitting here a long time listening to us. But we believe the property is suitable for development. We believe that the 20% AOIs are important in really minimizing the touch on the land. We have a geotechnical study that has been done. It's really a preliminary investigation, and we'll do the full study, but there's no indication that this property can't be developed for residential at this point in time. And so I think those are the important ones. And then the adequate facilities and services, you know, this really has minimal impact on county services. There are private wells, private septic system, private roads. So I think, you know, that's an important part of it. We do have a fire mitigation plan should emergencies happen, that that's really where services will probably be needed. And so we do have this fire mitigation plan that will be enforced by the HOA. So I think that covers it for us. I don't know if anybody on our team on Zoom or in the room has anything that you want to add. Okay, so with that, I can turn it back to you.
Chair.
Great.
Thank you. Yes, if we have any members, well, we can do this two ways. We can ask questions now, we can let there be public comment and then ask questions.
It's up to you. I just have three things I was kind of worried, but please ask.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you have to forgive me a little bit, I'm an engineer by heart. So, and this may or may not be too relevant, but I noticed it in your presentation. Being an engineer, working with NASA and other places, I noticed we saw all the positives associated with your project, but I didn't see the unintended consequences or the downsides. As a recommendation or a thought is that some thought ought to be given to unintended consequences. As an example, with the high-dollar homes that we're talking about here, and I think they're in the range of $5, $8 million, if I rumor mill has it correct, that's going to have a very large impact on the small population of this community's property taxes. And we've all been through a significant property tax increase here in the last year. And as these homes become available, they go to sale, they will become part of the criteria for assessments and valuations of homes that exist, and that is an unintended consequence. That, with people who have marginal incomes, that could be a problem when people happen to relocate, have to sell their homes because they can't afford property taxes, retirees on fixed incomes, things of this nature. So I'm not making any recommendations, I'm just saying maybe there needs to be some thought process on unintended consequences of the project, as well as obviously the great things that we know that strategic growth can provide to us. But we ought to look at both sides to make sure, you know, that we're balancing that, right? The only other thing I had was a question, I guess maybe to the Board of Commissioners and to the applicant, is parcel A contingent upon parcel B? Because that seems to be, that would be a concern if I'm a developer, be a concern if I'm a county commissioner, is that, you know, B is this open-ended thing we're going to do with the PUD that we haven't defined. Is your parcel A dependent on B?
No.
No. Okay, just want to make sure. I couldn't quite grapple that from the conversation. And just one more, it's a little bit more germane concern here tonight, is the areas of influence, has there been any consideration given by the applicant relative to ADUs or outbuildings? Consideration within that, the area of influence, individuals who might buy the homes might want to rebuild a second garage or a second outbuilding, maybe outside of that area of influence? And just want to know if there was any consideration getting to that.
I can take the first one on the property taxes. So I, yes, I have, as everyone in the room has, has recently gone through a change in the property taxes. You know, when we were, there was an appeal period there that I worked through with the assessor, and, you know, really what they were looking for is the comparison to the lot area and the building size. And I think that those, you know, the properties that we're talking about here are different in those ways. So I think there are strong grounds for appeal of those changes, but it is definitely a potential for unintended consequences.
Right. And I appreciate that answer. And it's, to some degree, it's more of a question to the Board of Commissioners, too, is we need to be considering that the diverse population we have, and age and employment status and things of that nature, you know, that's going to be a driver here to some degree. And again, it's not necessarily intended for this meeting, but I just want to make sure that we thought about things that can be negative necessarily to this project, not just positives and all the glowing red things, just to balance it out, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I add to that? I think that's part of why, we got that feedback the last one in the public hearing. And it has a lot to do with why you see some workforce housing on the property, is to provide a little more diversity of housing and not just the high-end homes in this area. So that was part of that thought process.
Okay.
Our second question had to do with parcel A and contingent, I guess you kind of got that answered.
Yeah, I did. They're not...
Yeah, and then the ADUs.
Want to make sure that they consider it, that's all.
Yeah, we did consider the ADUs, and I think even working with staff, I, it didn't seem like this was a desirable location for them. It doesn't make a meaningful difference in terms of affordable housing. You know, a lot of these houses will have space in them for staff, you know? They bring people with them that help provide the services that they need. So they're not likely to be homes that are going to be rented out. So that's where the private transfer fee is much more meaningful.
I was a little more concerned about individuals wanting to build extra buildings, outbuildings, larger buildings for toys and that nature. Less on the ADU, more on the individuals.
Well, that, they have to build in that AOI.
Okay.
Yeah.
It restricts them quite a bit.
It does. I just want to make sure that you're respecting...
Water rules.
Individuals will want to stay within that boundary if they have some desires later after they buy and build.
Yeah. Basically have to look elsewhere.
Yeah, okay.
How are those areas outside of the area of influence protected in the future? Where is that stipulating?
In our CC and ours.
Okay.
And the plat.
Very clear.
And why, yeah. Just, thank you.
I think it might be best to go to public comment, and then we can continue.
The questions.
Yeah. Did you want to give a list?
Thank you.
And we will start public comment with those in the room, and then we will move to Zoom, but if we can switch the view on Zoom, that would be helpful. And then, I don't know if somebody, somebody is going to be our timer. Okay, first one I have is Misty. Sorry, you're number one, you started out first. Should've got you early.
Thank you all for all the hard work, everybody's done this is a great presentation. So when people say the word Twin Lakes, everybody has a different thought that hits them, memory, an area or whatever. Twin Lakes literally starts from Highway 82 and 24, and then goes up over Independence Pass. So we'll start in the area where I'm at, which is Ballton. Now, a lot of us are just homeowners, get up every morning and go to work. So to have more chances of people in our area that will need to hire the people that live back there and bring in more tourism that will give us more jobs, or we're not driving to either Leadville or Buena Vista. And I know I'm saying this in my commute's five minutes, I will lose that commute if we don't start to increase the amount of people and incomes and the dollars, the tax dollars, tourism dollars that come into our area. We have been put on the Twin Lakes back burner for a long time, and it's such a beautiful area. You guys are great about stopping any overgrowth. I don't think that's going to happen. And there's so much more up there to consider than just the HDP properties, or the village, or the lakes. There's a lot more people back there, and there's some excitement. There's some, hey, maybe we can do something in the winter. There's just some more, I really see like a happiness out of people. We've done a couple of gatherings this winter, we made a place to go ice skating. So I feel like bringing new people in, I realize these are going to be wealthy people. I realize that they're, maybe they'll talk to me and maybe they won't, but I think they will. So I just, we welcome this change. This change needs to come, or we're, people like us are going to have to look at moving. And I'm not like threatening, oh, I'm going to move. I'm crying that I'm not going to move. Because we have to have more resources and more money and more things going on where we're at, it's just not working.
You're good.
Thank you.
Tisha McCombs. Hello. Step over here, I'm right in front of you. Hi, everybody, I'm Tisha. I'm the Executive Director of the Colorado Trail Foundation. So the Colorado Trail's been mentioned a few times. I heard you speaking about the Colorado Trail before we started. So for those that don't know, the Colorado Trail, we're entering, this is our 50th year, so our 50th anniversary this year. So what I'm learning as the Executive Director is that when the trail was first built 50 years ago, when Guti Gaskell, for anyone that might have known Guti or knows who she was, built and connected the trail, Guti didn't necessarily have an eye for private property. So we're learning that the Colorado Trail crosses private property 27 times, and it's 567 miles. And in the few years that I've been here, I've had to address this with property owners a few times. And most of the time, the way that that comes to me is a property owner requesting that we move the trail because unfortunately, they don't want to be liable for anything that happens on the trail from users going through the property. Now, while there are things in the Colorado State Legislature to address that, those haven't passed, and so private property owners can feel quite liable. So what's unique about this situation is I've been working with the Angel View team for about a year and a half, and from the get-go, when they first approached us at the Colorado Trail Foundation, and I want to point out, they came to us, they were proactive, and came to us and immediately said, what can we do to preserve the Colorado Trail? They didn't say, we need to move it off our property. They didn't say, we don't want to be responsible. They said, what can we do to work together? And that's what we've done for a year and a half. And so you've heard that where we're at now is a potential land dedication that would either be to the Colorado Trail Foundation or to Lake County. To address one of the questions earlier, if that land dedication did go to Lake County, the Colorado Trail Foundation would still remain 100% responsible for maintaining the trail in perpetuity, so it's not a concern anyone would need to worry about. But above all else, what I'm really grateful for is that the development team has done above and beyond what anyone could ask. You know, when there's a private property owner approaching us, my hope is to come out of this to keep the trail as good as it is, or just mitigate any negative consequences. And the opposite is happening here. We're actually improving the experience for trail users by the relationship with Angel View developers. And I really couldn't ask for any more of them. In fact, anything I've asked for, they've been absolutely willing to accommodate, even if they weren't the ones to come up with it first. So it's not clear, we are definitely in support of this project as we know it, and we see the Angel View teams being very strong project partners and supporters of the trail.
Awesome. Thanks. Okay, I'm going to go down with the people who said yes next to wish her to speak. I have, sorry if I butchered the last name, but I have Jan. Go ahead.
Hi, yeah, my name is Jan Boiselle. I printed out the land use code. Right off the bat, I wanted to know, those are funny projections. You have $60 million that your local residents will spend over 20 years, that's $3 million a year, divided by 11 households.
Sorry, point of order. Can you just address the planning question? Thank you.
I put my stopwatch here. So that's like $200,000 per family. How does that work out? The second one is they want to spend $30 million on local labor, workforce, to build construction. I think you have people on the board that know, how the hell are you going to spend 1.5 million on local per year? It's already hard enough to find it now. My main points, however, are that the proposal should be rejected. They obviously have not even made any attempt to address what it says in the land use code, and I quote, "Manage growth that improves the county's quality of life. Maintain and promote stability within the county's neighborhoods. Protect and enhance the natural and visual environment. Promote compatible land use relationship." And when it came to compatibility, I think your planning director pointed that out last time, what does compatibility mean? Like being a good neighbor. And so besides having the proposal, and by the way, you know, Phase B, I don't even know why they write it up, because obviously they want to pursue it. They're like, no, we're allowing ourselves to go forward with A, we don't really want to do B. That doesn't seem right. They have started Angel View 1, and so it's a good point to say, well, how did that work out? They have not been a good neighbor. For example, and I will just mention a few items, they have the applied road plan for Angel View 1, and I don't know how many of them they have built, but instead of keeping a distance from their neighbor, one of the first things they did was build through the forest a road right next to the only adjacent house that there is. I would say, sorry to intimidate, to harass them, so that was not part of the plan. So instead of even following, I'm not even sure they're allowed to build roads before the final plot is agreed. So they are plowing through the forest there on a part that is like three feet away from their property's neighbor. They have also taken water, they might tell you they had the legal right, and somebody else will speak about it, a lot of neighbors think they do not have the legal right. There certainly have not been nice neighbors to do that. So I'm asking you, look at the performance of Angel View 1, look at the numbers, and please go carefully through all the items that the code calls for. They don't even address it. How can these areas of influences, they sound rather gentle, can improve the visual environment? Thank you.
Larry Martin.
Yes, I've got a couple of concerns. One of them has to do with affordable housing that's being proposed. I was wondering what the wastewater treatment proposal for that would be. And then the other one was the land that's being dedicated for the trail. I mean, that's a good thing. Highway, our county road 26 runs back behind Twin Lakes, and it's a, it's a public road that runs through private property. And there's one little section of that road where every 50 feet, there's a giant sign that says, "Public road through private property." I mean, that's the way it is for the entire county road. And every 50 feet, there's a giant, "No trespassing, leave private property" sign, blocks the scenery. So is that the intent where the Colorado Trail would be? Every feet, there'll be this giant sign that says, "We are not friendly, we don't want you here." So that's, those are my two concerns.
Thanks, Larry. Amy Awor?
Awor. So I have a couple pictures. I have a picture to elucidate Larry's talk about the signs. Where the arrows are on a... Where the arrows are on a small stretch, probably from that end to the end of this building, there are three gigantic no trespassing signs. And they're blatant. And they're, if you're walking, which is the loop that the locals walk all the time, we are inundated with these pollutive signs saying no trespassing. I think I was going to go back to strategic growth. I'm concerned about the availability of water. And if they're going in and taking water before we address affordable housing, it concerns me that there won't be water for affordable housing. Angel View, secondarily, strategic growth, their cover picture is our pond as you're going into Lake County. But Alan drained the pond and displaced the beavers to fill his pond for a marketing event for the Ferrari Car Club. With the pump that was running, people started recording the decibels. It just inundated the town with noise pollution, sound pollution. And it robbed our beautiful entryway into town of any water in the pond. So that's just not quite being a good neighbor. I feel like he will be a great neighbor in his neighborhood. But as far as trying to work with neighbors, he's not a good player. His goals state that they are looking for people for second homes or third homes. And I think that if we're looking at how are we going to be allocating important resources in Lake County, allocating them to millionaire billionaires first before we take care of our crisis in housing, isn't a good plan. So the beauty of Twin Lakes is the wilderness. I, we actually just put in a well and septic. And the septic took most of our backyard and every invasive weed populated our backyard. So if I look at having twenty-eight or twenty-seven septic fields and wells being driven, it is not a gentle process. So it feels like if you're building a development, it helps to go back and think of water treatment and creating a more substantive water treatment facility that can take care of the residents and potentially the affordable housing, workhouse housing. And that to just have everybody coming in and getting a septic and a well isn't a good plan for Lake County up in the mountains. It flows down. I think, wait, am I out of time? Okay. I think really thoughtful planning is important.
Okay, that's all for paper version. Those on Zoom, if you could please raise your hand if you would like to speak, I'll call on you individually. Jordan Williams.
Hey there, can you, can you all hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, awesome. Sorry to be phoning it in here. My name's Jordan Williams. I'm the Colorado Regional Rep for the Continental Divide Trail Coalition. So we've worked with Tisha and Alan over the last year on some of the trail goals here. And just wanted to read a couple of highlights from a letter that we submitted along with the application materials. So again, just wanted to thank you all for, for being there tonight on the Lake County Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioners. And we really appreciate the opportunity to comment. The Continental Divide Trail Coalition, so the organization I work for is the five oh one C three national nonprofit organization formed in 2012 to work with federal land management agencies to complete, promote and protect the CDT, which travels three thousand one hundred miles from Mexico to Canada through five states. As stewards for congressionally designated publicly owned resource, our priority at CDT C is to ensure that everyone has an equal opportunity to enjoy the trail. And in Colorado alone, the CDT connects seven hundred and fifty miles of some of the state's most treasured areas. But more than really a trail, we know, we consider it a connector of communities, cultures, landscapes. Leadville and Twin Lakes are, of course, designated gateway communities through our organization as well. So over the past year, CDT C team members, agency staff and other community partners, including CTF, we've engaged with Angel View Development to provide comments and feedback on their proposals. As you heard tonight, of course, about point two five miles of the current CDT Colorado Trail co-alignment there goes through the Angel View private property with about another mile of the trail directly alongside, of course. And several miles, you know, obviously within view shed of the area. CDT C's, our main goals in these conversations have been to protect public access to the trail and the scenic natural qualities of the CDT corridor, along with supporting the needs of Leadville, Twin Lakes as part of our Gateway Community Program. And throughout our meetings with Alan and the Angel View Development Team, they've demonstrated a really good faith effort to help protect the trail and respond to the needs of the local community. Some of the ways they've incorporated the feedback, again, that you've heard tonight, include donating open space around the CDT and Colorado Trail to an organization like CTF that would, that would hold the trail easement and provide public access to a point within the development to the CDT to visitors as well as private landowners, offering amenities. I talked about in track two, that could offer benefits to locals camping at nearby designated sites and those traveling the trail. And providing, proposing creative solutions to issues with social trails through private property and people camping in areas outside of public lands. I totally hear a lot of you commenting today about private property signs. And there's a lot going on, of course, at the state legislature with those, those issues in terms of the liability. And it's also, of course, can be definitely dangerous in terms of people starting fires and things on private and public land when they're, where in areas where they're not supposed to be camping and going through. So I totally feel you and understand you. And it is a very complicated, challenging issue. So we're definitely aware of that. And then, you know, we really appreciate Alan's efforts to promote affordable housing, of course, as well to local community members and some of the conversations we've had this year. So just in closing, you know, we really look forward to continuing to work with Mr. Elias, the Colorado Trail Foundation Forest Service and, and all of you, you know, as stakeholders and community members so that we can ensure the CDT experience is one that's enjoyable and accessible for all. So thanks, thanks again for your time tonight. And we really appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Okay, Adam Ducharme.
Thank you so much. The Planning Commission members and Board of County Commissioners for this opportunity, I will read just a few excerpts from a letter prepared by the Lake County Tourism Panel on, of this project. So Lake County Tourism Panel exists to create revenue through tourism and improve the quality of life of Lake County residents. Our community's largest assets are our heritage and our outdoor recreation economy. Lake County Tourism Panel must help protect these resources. And we are increasingly embracing the fact that our community is partly a tourism-based economy. Lake County visitation is on the decline. Additionally, in 2023, Lake County lost sixty-four commercial lodging rooms with the sale of Silver King Inn and Suites to a developer who will repurpose those hotel rooms. The result of this is that our lodging tax and sales tax revenues are declining to pre-pandemic levels. This is a concerning trend for our community and our local businesses. This is particularly, this is particularly concerning in Twin Lakes, which struggles to operate year-round businesses. Their lack of commercial lodging units extremely exaggerates this problem. In 2023, at the direction of the Board of County Commissioners, the Tourism Director helped conduct a lodging feasibility study for Lake County. A copy of that study has been made available to this group. In that study, it was identified that our community would greatly benefit from a commercial lodging resort. Though the study was location agnostic, the type of beneficial resort property identified in the study matches the proposed project from Angel View two phase two. For that reason, the Lake County Tourism Panel supports the Angel View two project. To get the commercial lodging development proposed in phase two, they need to get through the residential development of phase one. Twin Lakes would benefit greatly from this type of commercial lodging unit proposed in Angel View two phase two. The commercial lodging project that they have presented is expected to produce one point nine million in lodging tax revenue over twenty years. Lake County Tourism Panel is dedicated to sustainable growth of our visitation economy and focuses on community first. Alan Elias and his team with Angel View have shown consistent good faith efforts to align with that work. For that reason, we support this application. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I just provide a point of order? So we, you're hearing Angel View one major subdivision, not parcel B.
Angel two.
I mean, Angel View two, parcel one subdivision. So you may hear some, some support for a future development application. But what we're concentrating tonight is a major, residential major subdivision.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I have that down as one of the main things I want to stress. I, I get the point, I guess, of, of bringing up this future development, but it's a little bit frustrating because it's not part of this development that we're talking about tonight. So it can't be considered. Because this could be, this could be developed and it could be developed now or it could be developed in twenty years. And then parcel B can be developed into something else. And if it truly was, in my opinion, if this was going to truly be an integral piece, this would be a P U V application, including residential and parcel B. And then there would be a phasing plan for them to figure out the pieces of, of parcel B. But this would all be put together as one, but it's not. So tonight, we are only hearing the first part. And a lot of pieces can hinge on this second part happening. And I think that's a very important point that needs to be considered tonight. So with that, I will give one last chance for anybody who maybe had said no on the paper or on Zoom for public comments. That is our land use attorney. And I think she just left her hand up from earlier. Any other public comment or pitches?
What does a gated community look like in this environment? What does the gate look like?
And that will probably likely be something down the road. I don't think that's anything that we go for tonight.
Wildlife?
And those wildlife impacts will be figured out through that process as well.
And we already have, within the staff report that I believe that we can have online, and we do have comment back from Colorado Parks and Wildlife. They did comment.
And I will say, building fences and subdivisions, you, you have to account for wildlife migration and movement. It's, it's, it's contingent upon you building any sort of fencing device in any nature.
I'll go ahead and start with the County Commissioners, if there's any comments, questions? Questions?
None here.
Yeah, I have one question. Sorry if I missed this. So there's some comments from C dot about like the number and location of access point on Angel View two. And I'm just wondering sort of where your thinking is on that or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question. We did, we did cover some of it. I think the condition of approvals intended to really allow us time to address that going to preliminary plan. But we, we are, and we have been working with C dot. We do have a traffic engineer. We will continue to do that. And I think at this point, we've got to start to look at all three access points at the same time. So we make sure that it works cohesively. So I, I think that's the work in front of us.
Can we put the proposed, the plat back up there?
Yeah.
So my question, I guess for staff and applicant is how is this? Are we just thinking that bottom piece is what we're considering to access points? For emergency? Because if lot of loving gets developed and there's no constructed emergency access out of there, I mean, to me, this is a lollipop without emergency access for those top lots. So to me, this does not meet the definition of a second egress. I know there's an easement that goes through parcel B, but if that's not constructed, then that's not real emergency access for a two access. And so it doesn't need the two access. No, I mean, our subdivision requirements make it two access. So if one access is blocked, you can get out.
But also turn around.
Good point.
At the end of that.
Yeah, I would direct those to.
Go ahead.
The intent is to build the emergency access.
So that would be a condition?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, that was not moving.
In the time of street aid instruction, the emergency access will be built throughout.
It, it could very well be a gravel road, but it will be accessible.
But at least it's a road.
Yeah, yeah. And the other, the other item is going through Angel View one through that.
Right.
Right, so we have that road as well.
Yeah. And Angel View one's second, just to refresh, Angel View one has, their second egress is considered this one also.
I'm going.
I have it in my.
Do you? Yeah. If you go to my presentation, I have Angel View one. So you can show the access point. It's, uh, right there. Yeah, right there. And so I've only highlighted Angel View way and then.
It's okay.
And so there's the access that I've highlighted. That's Angel View way. And then down at the B S, then they have another access there.
Yeah. But those, but that, those main lots all access it through this and then out Angel View two again. Yeah.
There, there is a separate emergency access easement dedicated.
Right, so.
Right, right through here.
Okay.
So that sort of satisfied the secondary point of emergency access for Angel View.
Okay. Yeah, that was my main, that was my big question on that. Okay, those are my main questions. Commissioners, any? Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I, thanks for asking that question. Whether I did also want to kind of address what seems like a requirement to have that road accessible through that parcel B. I do, I'm happy to see the Colorado Porters Foundation here. I did have a lot of questions about the county's benefit to accepting that dedication. And I don't, I don't, I don't see one. I, I see complications. So it's, for me, it's nice that there is an alternative. Let's see, the, uh, Anne, the sister, is that a requirement by our code, our building regulation?
I'm, so it is a, it's under, I believe it's required by, the fire marshal required it in the fire review.
But is it required by code or is it a request of this review?
It, it was based on, on the review and, and what they are suggesting and for fire mitigation purposes. And I also think it was brought forward as a recommendation from the wildfire mitigation plan through Colorado State Forest Service as well. So it was a culmination.
Right, is there, does that, is that, is that only for pumping? Or is there a dry hydrant system that would be proposed on the property as well?
It's designed to be a benefit for the community, especially wildfire, but also for everything outside the community. You know, we want Angel View one and on Angel View two.
And she's asking about the design element of it? The I M G one?
Ten thousand, yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's just for pumping, so they can fill trucks there.
Yeah, okay.
And, and if, if I can add to that, there's one sister on AB one and one sister on AB two.
Right.
Okay. There is a, there is an agreement with the Mount Albert pump, pump station for filling our fire trucks. But let's see. I do think that it probably would get worked out between down and preliminary with public works. And sorry, but looking at Angel View one here, but the, it does seem, it seems like all the drives in Angel View two are probably placed in such a way because of the topography. But as I appreciated to point out, by staff, we have seen plenty of conflict happening with dividing and having layers access easements and driveways through each other's property. So I would strongly urge and probably prefer to see lot lines that aligns with those driveways and seeing some of those. It seems like they could be altered. I'm sure it's easier said than done perhaps. Looking at, at the design here. But I think that's another thing that I would hope to see in the next phase here. I do appreciate S E H's engineering comments. Let's, I think, address that all of those would be addressed through any next phase that might be permitted. Let's see. Anne, would you just kind of repeat again the, you had in the staff report and you said it in your presentation that the, maybe just reiterate. re, um, report, and you said it in your presentation, that the, maybe just reiterate the contingency of the Angel View one. Uh, what, what level of completion of Angel View one, uh, is it designed and planning or starting a construction in order to, um, get to the final plat or construction of Angel View two? Could you just restate that once more?
Absolutely, so, um, and, and as the engineer, um, put it in his review too, I think, um, it was stated well, but, um, construction on Angel View two can happen until Angel View one is complete. Complete meaning platted, I'm so sorry. Uh, once that it, once that it has, um, um, been, uh, fully platted and depending, there may be, um, further, uh, work that has to be done as far as it, because of the road integration. And so we can't start considering the final plat of, of, um, Angel View two until, until, and there's some unknown elements. We, we don't know exactly what CDOT's going to say about the access points. So the alignment of, um, obviously, access points will also be, you know, the outcome of what we find will determine at what point, um, Angel View two could be planted and construction can begin. Um, but we, we have to determine, um, basically what the circulation of the road is going to be, what type of road design is needed. Um, you know, there's, there's still some design elements that we don't know yet that, that will have to be determined. Um, but those will have to be, um, determined and those outcomes, um, reviewed and approved in order to move forward. But there's obviously a very integral connection between A V one and A V two. And without, um, really knowing how, um, the Angel View one is going to be the final plat, uh, how we arrive at that. And what CDOT's response to this is, is kind of a, an unknown, but we do know we can't move forward with A V two until those things are resolved.
So sale lots and buildings.
Can I clarify just a little bit on that? So is it that they can't get a final plat, or they literally are not allowed to start constructing roads?
I, I think it's too early to tell you that. I mean, they're, they're potentially, um, we, we have those unknown elements. So, um, I, until a little bit more is known. So if the roads are an integral part that have to be designed to a certain standard to accommodate, um, Angel View two, then it's going to be the, the, you know, that has to be complete, so.
So with Angel View one, for instance, if they, uh, just to back up, because I think there's a confusion on this question is are they allowed to, is there anything that prohibits them from going out and building roads, even though maybe they're not approved yet through final plat?
No.
So they can go out, so the fact that there's been construction on roads on Angel View one is fine. So it's not that they can't start constructing. It's this that you're not going to get approval for them. So it's really final plat just won't be approved. It's not really that we're prohibiting construction.
Um, construction, yeah. Until we have a subdivision improvement agreement and the project's been bonded, there shouldn't be any road construction happening. Um, so I think that can be.
Well, somebody should look at it.
Yes.
It's easy to walk around. They give you access.
Pioneer roads are okay. That's what we have.
What is a pioneer?
Um, what we have.
Okay, I'm not gonna, yeah, we want to.
And I think that, so staff will investigate that and work with the applicant, but we do not have a final, um, S I A or, um, on Angel View one, so there should not be construction.
So for the purpose of Angel View two, until really they're close to finally, you know, until they're doing final plat, there won't be construction on Angel View two.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That I think would be answered.
Just make a clarification. We're, we're talking about Angel View at Twin Lakes. We're talking about the construction of Angel View way through that project, right? Not like anything else that's associated with that, but the requirement here is for the access of Angel View way to get to the boundary of those two projects. So I just wanted to be.
Correct, but Angel View one has not, um, done the necessary, um, uh, bonding of the project.
Sure, yeah, no, I, I just want to make sure that it's not like, you know, all the, you know, everything is complete within Angel View at Twin Lakes. It's just, we're just talking about the construction of the road and the access.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay, good question.
So, so there, I think there's some confusion with public, if we can start Angel View two before people are like building houses and completing Angel View one, and I just want to make sure everybody kind of understands that. No, it's really just that once you get to final plat, you can start construction on Angel View two. Sorry, Sarah, I just wanted to clarify it from here.
Um, my last thing, which I think I understand, and Heather, I think you addressed it a little bit with some comments that might be leading over to circulation on parcel B uses that might be proposed, but, um, these area, these homes are meant to be residential and not, they're not, they're not seeking, I didn't see anything in the application, any variance from, um, commercial lodging or short-term renting, and they would follow our short-term.
It's actually prohibited in our C C N Rs. We don't do short-term.
Great, okay.
Right, I think what was a little confusing was, um, kind of the economic impact.
Lodging tax dollars don't work if you're not short-term renting them.
So I think that, that, you know, there's discussion in there, but I think that, um, that is again, you know, kind of getting a consideration of, of a future P U D, um, but does it, is it relevant or?
This existing?
Yeah, the existing.
I mean, those numbers were based on parcel B as well, I think, right?
Right, that's, yeah.
Because they were all large and not B, so.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're actually based on Angel View at Twin Lakes, Angel View two, and parcel. Okay.
Yeah, there's, uh, the, but the lodging, um, aspect would be, uh, yeah, there's no, there's no short-term rental, uh, options available in A V one or two.
Correct.
Did we have, I'm sorry, did we see copies of those covenants?
I mean, so the covenants come at, or in, for A V two, they will come at preliminary. They have to have draft, um, uh, C C N Rs at preliminary.
Will they be the same as Angel View one? Do we know?
Very similar.
Okay.
Yeah, they will, and we have, um, we have submitted those for A V one.
Yes.
Yeah, and we've, we've had a chance to look at those.
Okay.
Okay, we had some conditions, um, regarding them. I, I can't tell you all of the preliminary, um, plan conditions right now on A V one, but I know that we had asked some things to be added to those C C N Rs.
But those are fire mitigation for, are those bits submitted for?
For A V one, yes.
For A V one, yeah. Um, and then my other question, there's multiple places, my last question, uh, in the, um, in, in staff report where it's, uh, you know, a lot of this is contingent on the Angel View one, will we need to go back and revise preliminary planning to also reference Angel View two? A point, I guess this is a procedural question.
Um, no, I think Angel View, um, one, you know, Angel View two is dependent on Angel View one. But Angel View one has already received preliminary approval as its own major subdivision.
Right.
And so, um, Angel View two is essentially a second phase. Um, and so it, it is not dependent upon, um, Angel View two. Unless, I'm sending out, I'll see. Yeah, I'm going there.
Uh, any other questions?
I have a quick question for the, the development team. Have you guys had any other developments anywhere else? Is this the first?
We have three. We have two in Twin Lakes. We have another 123 acres just outside of one of these that we did.
And then my question for staff would be, are there any limitations on the, the dwellings themselves, so far, size or height? Or anything of that nature? Just how curious.
Um, so the zoning for Recwell, um, requires a minimum dwelling unit of 600 square feet, but we don't have a maximum. And zoning, uh, limits them to a height of 35 feet. So, um, those are the zone district, uh, dimensional standards for building.
That's all I have.
Sure.
If there are no other questions, I won't entertain a motion to, oh.
Sorry.
Nope, it's okay, I see this thing.
Yeah, better. It does say that Angel View one, the C C N Rs of Angel View one will be revised to incorporate the Angel View two proposal. I just want to make sure that there's, I mean, I don't have to nail down exactly where now, but I just don't want to prevent or, or present something different in conversation and is what, and what is.
So I'm so sorry, we, um, that's in their application?
It is in, uh, sorry, it's on page two of the staff report.
Oh, that A V two.
We have a lot of Johnson, who has, who wants to answer me that.
Yeah, Bart Johnson's here. He's the attorney drafting them. Um, and so we'll let him suggest how he's going to, uh, do the amendment to the C C N Rs.
Okay. Bart, are you there? I saw you.
I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
Yes, but the, the plan is to, uh, the Colorado Common Interest Ownership Act, K I O A, has a provision that allows a developer to reserve the right to add in additional land in the future to a set of covenants as long as it's identified upfront. And so our plan, and which we've already done in a updated draft of the Angel View one covenants, is to identify the, these, um, these 11 additional lots, this area, as a, as a future petition, potential addition to those covenants. So they would become subject to the same exact covenants and the same owners association. It would participate with sharing the common amenities, the trail system, but be subject to all the same restrictions, which include, uh, how the area of influence works, which we kind of worked through. I, I realize it, it's been a little while, but we worked with, through, uh, staff on the area of influence provisions in the covenants for Angel View one to get everybody comfortable with what's permitted, what's not permitted. Um, and so all that, that entire regime would apply to these new 11 lots in the same way, because they would be added in as new, to new, as 11 additional lots as part of that homeowners association.
Can we, I don't think, I think there was additional question about what else is in there, because like the transfer fee. Bart, maybe you can mention the transfer fee, the, um, wildlife, um, sort of protection and our fire mitigation.
Sure. Well, first, uh, the transfer fee would be a privately imposed covenant that requires sellers of ho, homes in the, in these lots, both Angel View one and this Angel, these Angel View two lots, to pay four tenths of one percent of the sales price to the, um, the Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority in support of affordable housing efforts. Uh, we've drafted that covenant, I believe, uh, Allen has sent the draft of it to the director of the Regional Housing Authority for their input first. Um, but then obviously, Lake County itself and staff there would get an opportunity to look at it. But the, the idea is it would be a privately imposed restriction that requires those at each sale of a home for those, for those, that four tenths of one percent to get paid to the housing authority. Um, then, um, the area of influence is pretty straightforward. It's, the, the concept is the area of the lot that can be disturbed with landform changes, landscaping, construction, et cetera. Obviously, any buildings is limited to that area of influence with the exception of driveways, utility extensions, and septic fields. And then outside of the area of influence, wildfire mitigation would be permitted as needed to stay consistent with the state's wildfire recommendations for this property. Um, and so we built that into the covenants. Uh, but other than that, owners are not permitted to go start cutting down trees or making landscape changes or changing grading, that kind of thing, outside of their area of influence. And I, one important qualification on the area of influence is that just because you're within the area of influence doesn't mean you can build a building anywhere within the area of influence, because you still have to comply with the county's setback requirements for buildings. So the buildings, think of it as they have to both be in, in the area of influence to start with, and then they must also comply with all the county's setback requirements. So if some of the areas of influences are closer to a lot line than a setback may permit a building to be, that just means that could be an area that they could have landscaped or have a non-structural improvement of some set sort, maybe like a patio or something that gets closer to the lot line, but the building itself would still have to comply with the setback requirements.
Um, Bart, I have a question, uh, really quick to just kind of piggyback on what you said. Um, so the covenants are where the transfer fee is memorialized. In your experience, because I know that this is, um, something that, you know, an idea that in concept that you had brought, given your experience and other, um, on other projects and developments, is that, so there's nothing, um, captured within the deed? And, and being in the covenant, is that enough to be able to, in perpetuity, like catch that through the transfer process, like with title companies and, and you, so has that been something that has been? So I guess is that where the sole place that it's memorialized, and has that been enough to make sure that, um, real estate closers catch this through the, since, you know, I just, I just.
Well, not only that, but technically, an HOA can amend covenants, so.
Right, and it, and with them being able to amend them, I just, so I was just trying to kind of.
Yeah, so two, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Let me offer a clarification. First, the, the covenant imposing the real estate transfer assessment will be an entirely separate document. So it will not be, will not be part of the C C N Rs, because you're right, owners under K I O A, 67% of the owners can amend owners' association covenants. So the real estate transfer assessment will be a separate covenant that isn't subject to K I O A. Um, it's, because it doesn't have anything to do with an owners' association. And it can't be amended without the approval of the housing authority. So there, there'll be a, an express beneficiary of it, and it can't be amended without their approval. And then, secondly, uh, to your point of kind of enforcement and making sure that it gets complied with, um, I've seen these in, in a variety of places, from Lakewood, Colorado, to Eagle, Colorado, to uh, the Aspen area, the Salt. Uh, and once they get recorded, title companies invariably pick them up. And they become a covenant running with the land that's burdening title. It shows up in any kind of title research that anybody does. Um, and title companies become aware of it, and they make sure it gets complied with. And if for some reason somebody misses it, the obligation is on the buyer, and it runs with the land. So even if six months later, because the title company missed it, the housing authority could make the buyer pay the fee, because it's the buyer's obligation. And it becomes a lien running with the land, so it's enforceable. The way we have it drafted, it's very similar to one I, I did for a project in Eagle County a few years ago that's currently being enforced and generating revenue for their, their housing program. Though that one is, is broader than just housing, but that's kind of what it was, I, you know, kind of primarily targeted for. But title companies pick it up, but even if they don't, the housing authority has a lien to ensure enforcement.
Great, thank you, Bart. Any other questions?
And that transfer is only during a sale, not if it's a transfer to, um.
Brother Jim?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. And in perpetuity, till forever.
Yeah, there, there are some basic exceptions to it, like, for example, uh, a gift from a spouse, like a husband to a wife, or, uh, if someone dies and their children inherit the property. It's only really, it's, it would become payable on sales where consideration is paid. Or, or in exchange, if someone were to exchange two lots, like swap them, that's considered a sale, and it would be paid on the, the value of the property at the time. But for any kind of arms-length sale, your conventional, like, I'm buying your house, the, the buyer would, would have to pay the fee on that.
Go ahead. Oh, I'm assuming that the sister would be buried, is that correct? Okay.
Okay, a sister would be buried.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, when you pump water out and there's a fire on the tire.
I I mean, I don't, I I don't actually, I, I am like the wildfire mitigation champion, but I don't, I don't think that this is necessary. Um, we do have a lake and the agreement of non-aller comp station for, um, these filling, filling our apparatus. Um, but the other question, and and I mean, to comment about adding costs to a development and what that means, um, kind of incastigating, uh, consequences, but, um, I'm wondering what the, is the sprinkling on the inside end or outside of the buildings that was requested of them?
Well, it would true depend on the design, um, but, uh, you mean outside? Generally, we're talking about, um, uh, within the the building itself.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm going to spread them under. Do you want the motion to close the public case?
It hurts me to close the public version here. That's a good option.
Uh, you, okay, I'm thinking of closing the public case. Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, at this time now, the commissioners are gonna go have dinner and hang out with family. And the planning commission will now discuss and make a motion. You're welcome to stay, but there won't be any conversations, comments from the public. Uh, it will clearly be a conversation within the county commissioners, uh, the planning commission. Clear, good. Who wants to start?
I'd really like to hear your thoughts.
That always happens. Uh.
I've learned to ask.
Uh, I have a lot of mixed feelings, you know, like, I love the idea of the Colorado Trail stuff and how cooperatively they've been with that. I, I'm really struggling to understand why we're hearing phase two and phase one isn't done. Um, and I, and then also that we're rushing to get phase two approved without the second portion of it, um, when phase one hasn't done. So to me, it would have made more sense to do phase one and then do phase two together with the whole whole thing, so that it became a little bit more popular with the affordable housing and all that. Because otherwise, I think that was, that was the intention behind that is to say, hey, we're great and we're really excited about offering affordable housing, but we can't come into it right now. And I, um, although the intentions of the current people involved might be to have that happen, that may not happen. And the other piece that I feel like is frustrating, with I think my main frustration with introducing phase B of that is the community sees phase B, assumes that this is all happening together. When it doesn't happen and it doesn't happen soon, it's gonna be that we didn't make them do it. And so to me, just the way that this confuses the public, um, I just wish it wasn't brought up or that it was all done together. So that part, um, so if I'm just looking at at the piece that's in front of us, which we're supposed to do today with phase two, um, I have the same feelings I had the first time that it was put. And honestly, even with Angel V one, which is, I fear that a development like this with the targeted owners in mind doesn't fit within our community. Um, I I don't feel like a development, um, I I I question it's, I I not only question the viability of it, but if it is successful, um, it's just not the the community, the fabric community that I hear from the majority of like community sessions and public hearings and things like that, um, from what our current level community wants, um, to see. So that's tough on paper. Does it meet all of the criteria in here? And yes, roll on, roll in remote, it meets that with lot sizes, it does all of those pieces. Um, but the idea of the the subdivision, uh, doesn't feel correct to me. But that's not necessarily something I can, well.
Thank you.
Would have been good to have, um, number one, first, we got as far as a preliminary. You know, I'm going to breathe on that. But, um, that would have made a lot, every piece on this side look better, but more understandable.
Well, and a chance to understand its viability and how it functions within our community.
I just, I would assume that there were cost advantages to not, you know, that that there was, if they combined the two or if they got one over the track before the other.
Make the whole room.
Right, it would make some higher cost incurred to finish one before you actually even try to go work two. But I I agree with what you're saying, I just think that there's some cost advantages to the applicant, probably.
And I'm sorry, Steph, can I ask a question?
Yes.
You had mentioned that this sketch plan approval is contingent on final plat for AV one?
I mean, right, I mean, there's no way that we can, um, we we couldn't approve a preliminary. So so we, so we didn't condition it, because the reality is, we can't approve a preliminary, their next step, until we have sketch or or we have to condition it at preliminary, one or the other. Um, that before, you know, so a concept, we're not, we're done, we're we're in the concept stage. But if we get to a preliminary, preliminary application and 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 Angel V one is still not done, um, then it becomes a condition of approval.
When does final plat expire on AV one? And how long does sketch plan, how long until preliminary plat would be due on this?
So sketch and preliminary, um, both have a year. Um, the applicant did apply for final, um, during, um, that year period, um, but final has lingered. Um, so they did come back and they made application, um, by the deadline, but we are now hard pressed to continue on if something doesn't happen very soon.
Okay. Uh, it would, if we were going to recommend approval, I, even though it's, the idea is that we couldn't approve it, I would like to condition that final plat be received before on AV one, before we consider preliminary plat. So that there is no request for extension on that piece. That they have to have final plat for AV one done before a preliminary plat can be considered on AV two.
What do you consider, you mentioned that would be more cost, like, explain that a bit. What would the extra cost be if they didn't finished one now?
Well, I'm talking in terms of building, final designers, design costs that would be incurred to get to final plat that might have to be changed and make change notices as a result of of the phase, sorry, phase two. Parcel A, there's, if they're starting to build at all, there might be some modifications that'd be made. I can't predict what those might be, but there's road structures, I don't know, we talked about that a little bit. Um, if you get too far ahead of yourself on one, there would be additional costs that could be incurred.
And you said, uh, one is still viable for eight years?
For one year, one year.
For one year.
One year, and we're almost at the end of that.
Well, it has for one year, it's just that they made application before that expired. So final plat just has not been approved or been enough to come to us yet.
And and final plat won't come to planning.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
It just goes to the board, I just take it to the board, um, show them how all of the conditions have been met, and they make a motion to approve final plat, and they sign the S A. So there won't be a public hearing for final plat.
Well, this is the first time we've been faced with something like this.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I'll just add, just, uh, you know, um, you know, hearing from both the developer's side, of course, it's a nice presentation. Um, it it is difficult to to, um, hear an encompassing, um, result of all of this development, being that we can't really talk about parcel B, but that was included in the numbers. Um, so some of those projections, that's kind of hard to to just see it in the presentation.
To visualize.
Yeah, um, you know, um, and and I understand the concerns also from the community as well. Um, but, you know, I I don't know how much that weighs in on things, but I, just from the, from the, to approve something second in line before the first thing is approved, I I have a hard time seeing how that's, it doesn't seem very smart to me. I, just to throw that out there as a basic, you know, um, seems like putting in a cart.
I, and 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 I, and I do think that there are a couple of things within our land development code as well as the comp plan that kind of point to, but unfortunately don't necessarily. Well, the one that Yon brought up, which is good, the managed growth that improves community quality of life, like, there are pieces to this that we don't know if it's gonna improve it or if it's gonna greatly impact it. And without one, yeah, I, it's tough for me to see just in, you know, my own experiences in town and the my line of work and things like that. It's it's tough for me to see this kind of development improving our community's quality of life. The property owners around it, their property taxes, their, um, just the general feel of the community having third, fourth, the homeowners out there. Like, it's just, it's a, it's a completely different type of community you're building there, and I believe that will end up being its own community. Um, I, yeah.
And and I'm hoping we can get creative with the property tax situation, because if it will have a dramatic significant.
I don't know how you can, I mean, I think.
I don't, I don't quite.
It is what it is.
But that that is a significant impact to current property owners.
And that's a statute thing, you know, like, I mean, the only thing can be the, right, it can only be that the assessor is making sure that they decide that this three-acre piece in Angel View isn't comparable to the three-acre piece down the street.
I kind of said that for the benefit of the work commissioners. Wish that I was doing that, but, um, because there has to be some modification, because we we will price people out of the community that are marginal, retirees, people in fixed incomes. This last goal was rough, and it's gonna be way rougher when we're bringing this housing to the community. So we we gotta get creative, if we want growth, we're gonna have to get creative with how we do the assessments, because, you know, the only thing we control is the valuations, so let's.
And the assessments are pretty well controlled by the state.
Well, the valuations aren't, that's my point. I don't think they're totally controlled by the state. County, county has a lot to say in evaluations.
The methods of the valuations, it's one thing.
Yeah.
That the the assessor has to follow.
Got creative last time, so, let's see. It was very creative last time. Um, so those are all just thoughts that, you know, I mean, there's, we, you know, within the constitutes, within the constitutes of what we're trying to do with phase two, I mean, these are all concerns, but.
Does, uh, Angel V one and Angel V two, does it have that same topography from corner to corner so far as?
Well, I would say Angel V one has, um, uh, some more severe topography than Angel V two.
Steeper.
Yeah.
Okay.
And not, yeah.
And and that preliminary was okay with that, that slope? And on Angel V one, just out of curiosity?
Angel V one, um, did considerable engineering, retaining walls, a variety of different, um, design um, elements to contend with the topography. Um, but Angel V one was also in, um, had other hazard mitigation that it had to do as well. So it's, you know, did, we don't see, at least preliminarily, um, uh, you know, I think this is, this area is probably, then it's up to you a little more suitable than Angel V one, actually.
Okay, good, now.
Do you hear that?
Sure, sure, what are your thoughts?
I'd really like to see one completed, performing, and four. I don't know what phase of completed I mean. There, every single wall is up in the air, nothing is, nothing is safe at this point.
So I think you can arrive at, um, you know, uh, Heather's idea of creating an additional condition, um, that is specific about, um, and and I think that we have to draw it on a basis, so I think, you know, it is kind of a known element um, that the the road access precludes them from being able to move forward with preliminary without, um, addressing Angel V one and their C dot access. So that was kind of, you know, so that built into the conditions that staff had provided. Um, so I think as long as, as you can, you could reiterate, um, you know, the kind of basis for why, you know, uh, the preliminary couldn't be submitted ahead of time. So we just need to, you know, so I think the C dot access does it, um, but but we can, as long, I think as long as we're tying it to something.
Because, yeah, the response from C dot in the staff report said that they cannot issue the parcel A.
They have to resubmit.
They have to resubmit them for both together or independently?
However.
The permits have run out, I understand, so they have to resubmit both, actually.
And they have to, because they have to do a new traffic study, because the eleven additional now is, you know, it's over fifty percent of additional growth. So, um, they they have to do a new traffic study, and so they're gonna have to go through that, which then will be determined by C dot, you know, where those access points can be, so.
And that's what I was considering, the traffic of his parcel B ever happened.
They'd have to redo it then.
Yep. But that, those are the problems with this kind of approach, bringing them forward in this manner, you talked about in the staff report. Um, and so I think the other thing, and and it's really not completely for me tonight, it is to on one side, but that, you know, I think we've been talking for a while of taking a a deep dive into our land development code so that we can be really intentional in what we wanna see in our very limited amount of additional available land for development.
And given what we have.
Yeah, abound to what we have.
We have many decisions in phase two.
Correct. Uh, so with that, we can continue discussion after, but do I have anybody who wants to make a motion? And we do have some examples of motions in the staff report, which I can share my piece of paper with. Somebody won't still be able to read anything, but.
There's three conditions, or three motion examples, done with all of the conditions that staff had suggested. One for approval without any conditions and one for denial, but for denial, you'd have to have a basis with one of the findings. One for approval without any conditions and one for denial, but for denial, you'd have to have a basis with one of the findings.
You tell me.
I think you're.
One on one.
Was there anything brought up today we didn't capture in the conditions that were listed by staff report? Because I thought I heard something and I don't know what it was.
Um, yeah. What I heard from Sarah, I think he backed on conditions, the, um, uh, shared driveways and, and, um, easements crossing lots. Um, she talked about that. Um.
That was all in the red lines.
And that's in the red lines and it's in the staff, it's in the condition. I was just kind of trying to kind of, I was kind of going through what I heard from. Jeff talked about concerns about C dot, um, but that I think is being adequately addressed. Sarah asked about the CC and ours. Bart addressed that, the transfer fee. Um, we dove into that. I don't think I recall hearing, Cece, did you take any notes of anything that, for any conditions, um, based on either what Krishnan Nudge said, or I don't think Jeff said anything. Or was there anything within Sarah's comments that were in addition or outside of what we've discussed?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a really good point. Is there something additional to capture? Or you can give me your big ideas and I can help try to draft something if you've got some ideas.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that, um, I was trying to look for something that Yon had brought to us that was concrete that I didn't.
So those are the purpose of the land development code. Um, you know, all of those, he brought the purpose statements in the code.
Yeah, I, I don't personally see anything that's part of concrete there that the applicant hasn't tried in somebody else. So I guess I would make a motion for conditional.
Do you want to be able to read that? Is that what you want?
Well, I think we should read it probably.
Well, yeah, we definitely have to read it. I'm just asking.
I will read it if you love it to. Due process is not my strength, so.
And so, and you were saying that these are, these are the, just for the land development code, so they can't count towards the subdivision.
So they're, they're purpose statements, the purpose of, um, why the code exists.
I just wanted to say that out loud.
Yes. And they're not the findings. The findings have been, you know, articulated on the screen and then in the staff report.
So then a motion for denial that has to be based on those findings.
One of those things.
Right.
One or more.
So if there isn't something, you can't make a motion for denial.
Correct. Correct. Your basis for either approving or denial come down to your findings associated with the approval criteria. And so we're suggesting that as conditioned, um, those findings can be made now that they could be found. So in the conditional approval, we're saying with these conditions, so as conditioned with these findings.
Okay. And, and the point, uh, these would all be kind of taken care of during preliminary, yeah.
Yes, yes. Um, so they will have to be addressed as part of the preliminary in order to be.
Adequately addressed, not just addressed, but agreed upon, okay.
Yes, to the satisfaction of the planning commission and staff will review that and the review agencies. So if there's like C dot. So, you know, whomever they're having jurisdiction over, um, whatever area of concern it is, we've, we've adequately satisfied them.
And then the only statement that was brought forward on the comprehensive plan, right, from Yon, was that, or?
So that's not the comp plan.
Or was that the development code?
So that's the development code purpose, so the, the general provisions and purposes of the code. So, um, you would have to pull something directly from the comp plan.
But some of that sounded speculative to me as well, so there's not.
Pretty much over to interpretation.
It is.
Right, okay. And so I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding that appropriately.
You would have to have a finding, a defensible finding.
Right.
So it starts, uh, sorry, it doesn't start here. He got me this picture, just it starts.
Oh, okay. All right. Additional approval. I move that the planning commission recommend additional approval to the board of county commissioners of file number twenty four dash oh four, Angel V two major subdivision sketch plan located on highway eighty two east of the village of Twin Lakes and adjacent to Angel V one, containing forty four point four eight acres with the following conditions. Comments from the county engineer including sketch plan, approval comments and the plan sheet redline shall be addressed in addition to the LDC preliminary plan submitted requirements. A solution or solutions to the items discussed in the staff report regarding access to highway eighty two shall be arrived at with C dot prior to applying for a preliminary plan. A definition of area of influence shall clarify the allowed uses of the lots, private, open space, building envelope will be preferable. Open space calculations may need to be reconsidered. All areas of influence shall comply with the setback requirements of the RC recreational zone district. A topographic map at an appropriate contour interval shall be submitted with preliminary plan. The applicant will either seek a variance for the shared driveway situation, which creates a code conflict regarding with easements in section six point two point three B five, or reconsider proposing three home sites on a single driveway. This variance will be determined by the public works given in its roadway standard and not a zoning concern. All statements made by the applicant in this application and in the hearing are considered as conditions of approval unless modified by other conditions of approval and further find positive findings of the approval criteria of section three point one six point three H as presented in the body of this staff report.
Did you need to add anything about completion of the emergency access?
Yes.
Last one, something I was thinking about too, that was, that came up in the meeting.
So we'll do a second on this and then we'll need to do an amendment to add to, unless you want to just continue making your motion in this moment?
No, it's just, I think we have to make an amendment.
Okay, so we just need a second for that?
Second.
Okay, now for an amendment, we have that and the.
The final plan for Angel V one must be complete before preliminary approval.
Before preliminary plat can be applied.
Before preliminary plat.
I would, I would put, uh, preface that with due to the integral nature or something. Give, give it a little bit of basis.
Yeah.
Uh, of, of having to finish one before you could submit the other.
Due to the integral basis.
My memory is not that good. Are you going to continue this?
Well, we have to do an amendment now, so she's just writing down the amendment.
Final plat for AV one must be complete before preliminary.
Application for Angel V two is submitted?
Before preliminary application for Angel.
Is submitted or approved?
Well, approved would be probably more, would probably be a more solid answer.
Right, that's how I'd recommend approval is that it's submitted.
Yeah.
Before preliminary.
Plan, plan, I'm sorry. Before preliminary plan is approved.
Plan for AV two is approved.
Correct.
Uh, Heather, you want to craft for me the emergency access to be complete? Before preliminary plat for AV two.
The emergency access plat of, is it called parcel B?
Yes, it was parcel B. So it is legally parcel B. So of parcel B, they've submitted, um, a easement already, the, the, um, the actual easement document and, um, the, uh, uh, map that provides the easement. So we do have those documents. They provided as a preliminary and for us to, so so they're, they're intended to, um.
So we have the easement, so we just need to put it as like, but that's a final plat condition really, that that road becomes constructed at time that the main Angel V road is constructed for.
The emergency access plat of parcel B must be constructed at.
The emergency access, um, uh, over parcel B must be platted as part of final plat.
But we need it more than platted. We need them confirming that they're going to actually put it in.
Yeah, the road, the road went building to be complete.
It could be included within, um, uh, will be part of the.
Preliminary plan for Angel V two? I would almost want to go farther than that.
Um, so we, so we, we want that as part of the, um, uh, public improvements or the improvement as part of, um, so it will be part of final plat because it'll be included in the SIA and then it'll be included in, so, um, I think that's their intention, but, um.
Final plat or, or preliminary, that we won't see it?
Yeah. So let's make it preliminary because it, because final plat, um, you won't, you'll, so if you want to see it.
So you won't see it. And you guys forgive me, I haven't slept in three days. So help me word this again. The emergency access plat of parcel B.
The emergency access, um, uh, through.
Plated on parcel B.
Plated on parcel B.
Will be constructed at the same time as whatever that word is called.
I'm sorry.
I can't remember. No, I just can't remember what this word is.
Should be constructed in conjunction with?
Way.
In conjunction with or at the same time as? How do you want to word this? They need different things to me, so.
Right. Um, so what I think that we want it to be included within, um, the improvements to be completed as part of final plat.
Final plat or preliminary?
The final plat.
It's final plat.
So not constructed, shall be
So the improvements, we want, we want the easement to be included, um, as, uh, the improvements. I'm sorry. Now, you know, I've been talking in circles. And so our intention is to make sure that the easement, um, is can, you want it constructed, so, um, it'll be part of the improvements that are included with the subdivision improvement agreement and as part of final plat, um, because that's included in the SIA agreement. So they, they've already submitted it. It will be included in your preliminary, um, design. And so the part of, of actually making sure that it comes to fruition and, and getting, um, we need to include it as part of, uh, the improvements within final plat.
It's way too many words, guys. The emergency access plated on parcel B shall be included in the subdivision improvement agreement of.
Subdivision improvement agreement, um, uh, through the final plat.
Through the final plat. Does that make sense to you?
As part of final plat, I'm sorry. As part of final plat.
I'm glad I'm not the only one. I'm going as part of. And I assume, I'm just asking this question because I'm not, I wonder what all those are. I'm assuming the fire district will approve of that access. And so there's no, you don't need to write anything in there.
No, and engineering as well. Engineering is going to, you know, to review it to make sure. There's already some pullout, um, uh, designs and requirements that, uh, need to be considered, so.
Yeah, I saw that. I was wondering about the road access beyond this road being built. I don't know where it's going to empty into. County road or is it dirt roads?
What type of?
Well, they would have to have access with their trucks.
Well, right, emergency management, yes. Yes, fire, uh, emergen-, so, uh, fire will review it to make sure that it is appropriate for like a fire apparatus.
Right.
Fire access, yeah. They will, uh, review it as part of the, uh, preliminary.
Okay, okay. That makes sense now. I'm learning.
No, 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 no worries.
And I'm sorry, I can't read my own writing here because I got so cramped. The emergency access planted on parcel B should be included in the subdivision improvement agreement?
As part of final plat. Um, because with this, with the subdivision improvement agreement will also come a construction schedule. And so we'll, um, be looking to, um, address the coordination of all of those elements um, within the construction schedule.
And it was included in the subdivision improvement agreement of final plat?
Yeah. As part of, as part of final plat, as part of final plat. That's the last little, tiny little bit.
You didn't make it look any easier than I did, so that's good.
Okay.
And I don't need to specify which final plat?
No. Uh, well, I mean, this is the condition for AV two. It's not maybe, we're, you, you can't, we can't condition AV one.
All right, Edwards moves.
That we amend.
That we amend, file number twenty four oh four. The Angel V two major subdivision sketch plan located at highway eighty two east of the village of Twin Lakes and adjacent to Angel V one containing forty four point forty eight acres with the two following amended conditions. Due, due to the integral nature of the development, final plat for Angel V one must be complete before preliminary approval of Angel V two.
Oh, uh, yeah.
Is that clear enough? And two, the emergency access plated on parcel B shall be included in the subdivision improvement agreement as part of final plat. Second. Second.
Any discussion on amendment?
Then you're done.
Uh, all in favor of the amendment? Aye.
Aye.
Any more discussion on the original motion?
I still don't feel comfortable with approving two before one. That, that's, I just got to say that. That's all, that's my only dis-, not really a discussion, just.
Which I think we are helping that because they can't go very far just actually for this until they finish that.
They kind of took care of it.
Yeah, these were, these were very thoughtful conditions. Thank you for that. It makes me feel a lot better about it. I have the same, I have exactly the same reservation that this does tie them together. And this is for the approval of the sketch plan.
They have to still get approval of final plat.
So, okay. So we have to see, you have to be able to see all the parts before this can move forward.
It's really, yeah, essentially that's what I'm saying.
Uh, okay, I'm going to roll call it. Power trips.
Aye.
Joey Edwards.
Aye.
Steve Spencer.
Aye.
Stevens. Heather, Heather Lane, hi.
Hi.
Jason Ruffo.
Hi.
We do have.
Well, I, yeah, these. Okay.
Heather, Heather, do you want to vote for me as well or no?
Uh, sorry, I didn't have you on earlier where we asked if you had any expertise communication and things, so we kind of have Jason in your spot.
That's great. That's awesome.
Okay, thanks. Okay, uh.
I feel a lot better about this one than I did about the last one because I feel like I understand it a bit better. And thank you for voicing your concerns. It really does help.
Um, okay, now it goes to the commissioners next week.
That's right. Yep, I will take it to, um, actually it will, I don't think that they meet, um, next.
I confirm that they do.
Okay, because, oh, next week will be April second. So April second, we will take it to, um, the recommendation to the board of county commissioners and then we'll keep you posted on, uh, final plat and for the applicant. We will take the recommendation, uh, to the plan commission, commissioner, or, the board of county commissioners on April sixth. We will take the recommendation to the county commissioner, the board of county commissioners on April second, and so we'll want you to be at that hearing, you can be in person or hybrid, just a reminder, we involve the opening public hearing again. We'll just be bringing the recommendation forward for their decision.
Motion, anybody else want to talk some more?
Oh, I was going to say.
A journey?
A journey.
I like this, all in favor, aye. Okay, thank you everybody for participating in your public community efforts. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Did a great job.